So we were discussing the ZBA training.
You want me to start at the beginning?
No.
No.
If you read under the zoning board of appeals in here, the zoning board can have two alternates, which are members of the planning commission.
And I noticed a lot of them raised their hand. Most of them did have the alternates in the room.
Both other boards that I deal with, they have alternates.
They have five with the two alternates, right?
One has seven with two alternates and the other one has five with one.
Where is it? Is it in this?
Page sixty-five, I think it is.
Alright, we need to move on, folks.
And the sandwiches were good there.
If you'd like, you know, after, later on, you can invite a discussion or whatever. We need to move forward. We're gonna move on to new business, appointment of officers.
This is per your bylaws that you adopted last year, which I provided the page that you need.
And what's the, a page missing on purpose? I mean, I just wanted to...
Was yours like that too?
It was your bylaw.
Well, you got the bylaws and then you got it on the back sheet and then at the bottom at C, it says be set as follows.
It was only provided for the election of officers. It wasn't provided for the whole document.
And that's why, and I just put a question mark, like, okay.
Because you all should have a hard copy of this.
We do. Yeah, I was just asking to make sure that you didn't think it wasn't there if it was supposed to be.
And we only have a chairman and a secretary.
Yep.
Yep, and that's the way we change it too.
Yep.
So can you, can you just do a motion to reappoint?
There is a couple of different ways to do it as far as procedure goes. You can take nominations from the floor, open the floor for nominations, close the nominations, vote on that seat, do the next one, or in a lot of your smaller groups, and if there's not a lot of rebuttal to the same people working on it again, you could make a motion off the floor to reappoint those and vote on it.
I guess, Lee, considering what you told us earlier about some, your difficulties sometimes with varying, do you want to continue as chairman or would you?
No, I prefer somebody else because I have a difficulty here.
Then you might open the floor for nominations at that point, I would suggest.
Then I make a nomination of Rick McAvigie for chairman.
I support that.
Yes.
And I'd make a motion that we close the nominations.
There you go.
Is he gonna be the, I support that now.
Is it gonna be the chairman and the secretary?
No. Well, no, then we're doing each secretary.
Oh, we're doing each one.
We're just doing each independently.
Oh, okay.
Well, before you close the nomination, I would like to nominate Melanie as chairperson.
Chairwoman.
Chairwoman.
Chairman.
Chairwoman.
Person.
Person.
Person. There, now you have two.
Can I support that too?
I don't know, probably. Fine with me.
Are we gonna do the different ones or are we gonna do each one separate?
That's your side of the, they want to accept it.
Or do we show of hands for each one? I don't know. How do you wanna?
You don't have a support yet for that.
I thought Tanya did.
Well, I thought Tanya made the motion.
No. No. Rick made the motion for, now I'm getting Tanya's support of that too.
Okay, so.
So what, there's been two nominations.
I make a motion to close nominations.
Wait a minute. And I would just rather not accept that nomination.
Well, wait a minute, you should make one thing at a time. We've got a nomination made, there's been a motion made to close the nominations at two. And is there support for that?
To close it? No.
Close nominations.
We never technically opened for nominations.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, I thought, I thought we did.
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So you need to vote on closing the nominations, that motion.
All in favor of closing nominations, raise your right hand or whatever, yeah. Right? I mean, if I can't hear you, at least I can see you. So it looks like we have majority in that.
That was unanimous. So the nominations are closed at two. Now you should decide how you're going to vote on who it's gonna be. Are you gonna vote by a ballot? And it's my recommendation to you that you do that, that you vote by ballot. That way, nobody has to be embarrassed or anything.
Are we allowed to vote or no?
And are they allowed to decide if they want to accept the nomination? Maybe, you know, both need it or want to accept it.
Typically, in this case, I've seen it done both ways, but a lot of times, if there's somebody who really doesn't want the nomination, the board, it really hasn't put that person in to the ballot box that way because, I mean, if they don't want to, it's usually a situation where a person wants to serve in that capacity.
Or is willing to, get it? Not like you, not, most, most people don't feel...
How strongly do you feel about?
Well, I will, but I'm voting for somebody else.
You would serve if elected, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, he said yes.
Okay, so he's saying he would serve, you know, he would serve if elected, however, he doesn't really want the job. So I think that, you weigh as you make your vote.
No, take that back. Okay, what am I doing with that?
The half has got a name written on it.
Can I have a piece of paper?
What are we up to here?
Oh, I don't know, you're passing that down there.
Who's the secretary currently?
That's a question.
She's gonna take care of the book.
Can I get a piece of paper?
Did you have three already? What did you write on that? Did you see it, Melanie?
I haven't even written it.
I see it. I'm gonna pass a couple more for the next one. Or maybe we'll have a runoff here, I don't know. Everybody give your votes to...
Need one more. I'm gonna shuffle them up, so nobody knows who did what.
Oh, it doesn't matter.
It's the secretary.
Six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Oh, we need a secretary.
Yeah, we gotta...
Yes.
No, just my paper.
Give her some more paper.
Yes.
Here, give her the old stack.
Your new chairman will be Mr. McAvigie.
Oh, my goodness.
Alright, Rick.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Does he take office at the next meeting?
I believe that's the way.
That's what we do with ourselves.
I think on the side of the table until after the adjournment of the...
Right.
Okay, cool.
So what are we doing now?
Secretary.
Okay. Are we opening the floor for nominations on that?
That is group decide.
The chairman needs to do these things. The chairman, my recommendation is that you be open it for nominations. Open the floor for nominations for secretary.
For secretary?
Yes.
I'd like to open the floor for nominations for secretary.
I know, mate.
Second that?
Any others?
Any others?
Yeah.
How about Larry?
Is that a nomination?
Yeah.
Then it would need a second somewhere.
You gotta have a second.
For what, I didn't hear the...
Secretary, he nominated me for secretary.
I'll support that so we can, you know.
So, okay, who seconded for Melanie?
I did.
And then I made the motion for Larry and Bob seconded that motion.
So we're just going around and picking?
Yeah, he makes.
So, Bob, should I make a motion? Should I make a motion?
Okay, so, okay, do I make the mo...
Motion.
I entertain a motion to close the nominations.
Make a motion.
I don't think you have to have a motion to open and close for nominations, do you?
It should, but...
You don't have to, but typically, if, when you have received nominations, you would, you don't ask for a motion to close the nominations, but you would ask if there were any further and then typically, if no one has any interest, someone would make that motion to close the nominations.
Does anybody have any additional nominations?
There isn't any. You can declare that the nominations are closed.
Okay, nobody has any additional. I declare that the nominations are closed for secretary.
And now we'll hold the, hold the vote. Paper ballot again.
Do the paper ballot?
That's our question.
Oh, another one. Somebody's packing.
I gave you twelve, is that okay? You gotta make sure it's six.
This is the guy who talks here, we're just doing the secretary.
Oh, they're still not done, okay.
Maybe not this round.
Are they done?
Neither do they, apparently.
I don't think they've turned anything in.
Not his phone to report.
They're recording us.
Oh, that's what I mean. When I left the house, he was ahead.
Your secretary is Miss Mike.
Yay! Congratulations. Alright. Wow.
Let's give her a latch right.
I'm not even, she asked, I'm not even sure what to do, but we will do it.
You can start taking minutes.
I was waiting for the answer to come.
First thing.
I already do that for our cert team, I don't need more.
Well, there was a question, mine.
Okay, back to the...
Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Fine.
Okay, we'll move on, I believe we're all set. Zoning, zoning ordinance bids, review and recommendations.
Okay, did we only receive the two bids?
Yes, we put out three, we sent them to Carlisle Wartman, Row and Associates and Beckett and Rader.
Who was the one that didn't turn in?
Beckett and Rader.
They requested to call or meet. They didn't say they're not interested, but they didn't turn in, yeah.
Yeah. The, well, Dale had asked me to put something together to present to you this evening, and as much as I was over at the township all till well after nine o'clock last, and I didn't get a chance to actually put it in writing, but I will report to you that I have reviewed both of these submittals. And having reviewed them both, it appears to me that Carlisle Wartman has probably a little better grip on what the village is about, what they're, what we're looking for, and, you know, where to head with this. They are a little bit cheaper also, but I don't know that it's the five hundred or so dollars difference between the two is a big difference.
Yeah, it's pretty similar.
However, I will report to you that I have worked with Mr. Wong for a number of years. We have a really good working relationship. He is actually the contract planner for the township, so he's familiar with the area. I actually did talk to him, he called to see what was being looked for, and I told him that the ordinance here needs two or three things. One is updating, one is bringing in line with the current laws that are on the books, and the third one is to make this document workable, readable, and understandable by anybody that can pick it up. So he understands completely where we're going. And as you learned, or a couple of you learned from the meeting the other night, definitions within an ordinance are almost as important as the verbiage in the document itself. Whenever something to me is not understandable, I immediately go to the section for definitions. Because when you define something, then you can put it into something that can be applied. But without the definition, you don't really know how to apply it. That's where this whole confusion over defense thing started because the defense ordinance is not clear, the setback ordinance is not really clear, but with my experience, I understand these books and I know how to get where I'm going with them, where a guy walking down the street doesn't have a clue. So that would be another goal to redoing this document is to make it clearly as best as possible understandable. Now, if you did hear the presentation for the other night, you can update this book until you're blue in the face, and as soon as you do, something's gonna come up that you'll need to change it again. And that statement he made was probably so true that, and I've seen it over the years, when you think you got it down pat, somebody comes up with another request to do something that you never thought of.
That covers them.
Yeah. So it's gotta be a flexible document, it's gotta be a document that works with the community as the community either expands or grows or time goes on or, you know, different ideas take place. And unfortunately, this particular document, other than the few changes I've requested since I've been the building official, I don't think it had much revision prior to that.
It was revised back in 2008 after the last master plan.
Well, not to any great extent I can see.
Do you look at the even older ones? Because I thought it had changed a bit.
Yeah, well, there's some state law stuff that needs to be updated in here too, so...
Unless you feel very confident that you have read both of the proposals and have read it to the extent that you're satisfied to make a recommendation to the village council, my recommendation would be that you table this matter for now, bring it up at your next meeting after everybody's had a chance to review both proposals thoroughly and then make a recommendation.
Well, who has had a chance to review this?
Yeah, I even highlighted like how long they worked at the end and all that stuff too. That's who I was going with, Carlisle as well.
They made you, Carlisle's doing ten, ten visits and...
Yeah, well, no, Carlisle, I think showed eight and the total in Row is ten.
Yeah.
Eight meetings with Carlisle.
I go, yeah, most people talk to her, I guess.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Thank you. Is part of either one of these proposals that when the, when the revision is complete, will we have that on file where we can then make revisions ourselves?
Both of them, they say they would deliver it electronically in word form.
They both did.
Okay, thank you, that's all I needed to know.
See, I did read them.
And Lee, I think my concern question is, we would like to see three bids, we have two. So therefore, I think with, most of us prefer one because we only have two to choose from. If we had a third bid, it might be different.
Well, that would give you more time. You did have a deadline, we only had two by the deadline. So technically, if you get another one, it's not something that you should consider.
Right.
Because it passed the deadline. Now, if someone came in and you really liked that third, you could elect to extend it, but you would, we would need to open a new bid, period, to do that.
What about the response we received from Beckett? We put, since they did respond asking to meet with us to go over what we wanted, and we did not do that, is there a possibility we could use...
We did not, it's not that we didn't do it, they didn't, they didn't follow through to set anything up.
Okay. Other than the meal saying, hey, we were interested, but...
No, we said, sure, we'll be with you.
Okay.
But I'm just saying that you can't just consider now a brand, someone who just for the first time sends you something. But if you saw it and you said, well, yeah, we like everything about that, then you could, you could extend it.
And the only thing is, on the other side of that, flip coin that with the Beckett and Rader one, if all they did was send us one email and they never did any more follow-up beyond that, then I have to question, are they really that interested or are they going to be thorough and follow up properly with them doing the ordinance too? So, I mean, it does, I don't know.
I agree with that, but I agree with that. I don't think they had followed through.
Well, I don't know where it was at.
But I totally agree with that.
And I know Carlisle Wartman, the discussion has been, I'm looking at them for the next master plan as well. I think that would give them a chance to see if they work.
I like, I like they do branding township. I mean, they're...
Oh, Clarkson is where I heard with the master plan and we kind of discussed it with council that that's a possibility.
And actually regarding Carlisle Wartman, we did recently see some of their work with the joint Parks and Rec plan. And one of the things that I was impressed with is the fact that in that joint Parks and Recs plan, they did come up with updated statistical information to include in the updated Parks and Recs. We didn't have to chase them for that, you know, we did not get that kind of treatment from the count up. They kind of like carried forward the old data and we had to push to get newer data. And Carlisle Wartman provided, seemed to provide it upfront. To me, that's a positive for them too.
So what are we doing?
Well, I entertain a motion and what you guys want to do.
Well, my recommendation is that you have received, you could, a couple of things you could do. You have two valid proposals. My recommendation to you, and then, as you started the meeting or got to this point in the meeting, is that you shouldn't make the decision tonight, you should wait till the next meeting so everybody has a chance to review it. Now, then someone asked, said that they had reviewed it and followed through. So if everybody has reviewed it and you're all satisfied that you've reviewed it to the extent necessary, then vote on it.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I'm not.
I've had it a couple of days.
Yeah.
You're not?
I, no.
Okay. I think out of fairness, if there's one that wants it, you should wait. There's no, there's no panic that we do it tonight. And if you do that, then you just hold it off. In the meantime, that still leaves room for someone else like the one who's requested something to get their hat on and say, oh, well, let's get it in and see what happens. Or to call us and then if they call us and said something about it, we would say to them that the board's ready to make that decision. However, if you get a proposal in, they'll all get it and decide whether or not to include it.
So there's nobody else besides those three, but...
We just sent three out.
Right. But I'm saying since the one did not respond, is there somebody else to address to send out that three?
There are all sorts of planners out there, we could, we could pick. I guess the Michigan Association of Planners, everyone.
Yeah.
In the back, there's advertisements all over the place. You got the guy that gave the presentations the other night, MKSK or something like that. I've never heard of them before.
There's a lot out there. These are just people that we know.
And that's what I'm looking for, not random planners, but people that, yes, we do and are comfortable with. And that's why I was asking, is that the only three at this point? Okay.
Okay. And my, and my thought process here, I'm thinking about some of the things I've seen for like grant applications and things and for, they have requirements if there's a project over ten thousand, you need to have three bids and stuff like that. This is gonna be fifteen thousand. I don't know if we have any policies related amounts and numbers of bids for the village per se, but maybe we might want to follow a similar type of approach and say, okay, it's over ten thousand dollars, it looks like, they're both coming in about fifteen. Maybe we should try to have at least three bids to...
Yep. One of the other things we have to consider with that though is, you now have two valid bids, you can send it back out again. And one of these two could say, I wasn't that interested to begin with. If I gotta go through sending all this stuff back in again, I'm out.
We're not asking them to read some of that, are we?
Well, they, sure.
If you open them up again, if you send it back out, yeah, they would have to read some of it.
Now, it doesn't have to, they don't have to send all of the paperwork and everything.
They could just say, just, they can send whatever they want to send, but I think
most firms, if they're interested in this job, they're gonna, they're gonna say, well, maybe they weren't happy with our bid, let's add more to it. So I'm just saying to you, having talked to some of these people and know where they are with it, they could easily say, let's just forget it. You know, we now have three different bids that we've been accepted at, that we're working on, and so they could back off. Because both of the ones that have sent something to us are active firms that are involved.
Right. Well, I guess that they don't want to work with us and that's good to know now, right?
It's true.
Well, they want to work with you now. What they may not want to work with you is if you...
But the one suggestion you had was just tabling it, and if the third one does or doesn't, the council has a document that three bids were requested and we only received the two, so it takes some of that burden off and we can do it at the next meeting without...
And we gave more than enough time for anybody to ask.
And especially the pricing and stuff.
And I send out requests for bids for timber sales all the time. And if you get in bids and the people that put in their bids come and look at the trees and they put in their bids in the time period that they're supposed to before the due date, and then you say, well, the landlord says, well, I don't like you on those bids, bid it out again. Then the people that put in the bids and made the effort in the first place usually say, forget two guys, I got other things to do, other jobs to do. So it's a risky thing to just say, eh, we're gonna rebid it. Because you're perfectly good. Well, proposals may just pull up.
Oh, you know, and on the other hand, they asked for three bids, we only got two bids. Say, hey, the reason we're doing this is because we didn't have three bids for...
But we requested three bids.
Is there a requirement for three bids? That's the question. There's not any requirement in the law.
Okay, and nothing with grants, with Larry's concerns?
Or purchasing. Anything over a certain amount has to go up for bid.
But you did request three.
I thought it's three. What does it say? Three request or required three bid, or three estimates?
Are you talking about what the state would require with...
No, without purchase.
With our requirement.
Yeah. I thought it was three estimates. Is what I thought it has to be. I could be wrong?
Right, but is that three estimates in? I mean, you send three out, but...
No, three estimates of the debt.
That have to be in.
I thought that's what it is.
Okay.
But maybe it is, we request three.
Okay.
If you've never got three in, would you never do what you want to do?
We almost have. I mean, we've had somebody pull out on us and say they can't, so we found somebody else and we found somebody, I mean, we had to do that.
You know...
For purchases between seventy-five hundred and fifteen thousand, the village council must approve any purchase in excess of seventy-five hundred. Absent exigent circumstances, the village manager will provide three price quotes. For purchases between fifteen thousand and twenty thousand dollars, which we did not do, I believe, for the master plan, the village must advertise in the newspaper or in appropriate trade journals.
Trade journal.
And attempt, attempt to receive three quotes.
We made the, we made the efforts to have the appropriate number of bids. And I think that what happened, if you got into this situation with this, is that you say that the attempt was made and you couldn't, and this doesn't say that it's required. It simply says that it is something that you ask for bids. I mean, you don't, it would be, it would be crazy to, for anybody to go out and say, we make a motion to receive three bids. You make a motion to receive bids and you get whatever you get, and it would cause it with you read that, you say, okay, I got four. Do I shuffle them and throw one of them away so that I only have three bids to consider?
Never.
So you feel, you can't, you couldn't do it in a way to require a certain number of bids. There's no way you can do that.
Just maybe a, maybe a thought for lessons learned for next time around, if we are hoping to get three bids, maybe we should send it out to four places. If we are hoping to get three bids, maybe we should send it out to four places. So that if one doesn't respond, maybe we will get our three.
We could have done that, what you, what these, the places that these were sent to are the ones that he and I recommend.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. Maybe we just add another one into the list just so that we hopefully can get, you know...
Another bid?
Yeah.
You can do that.
Next time around. At this point, I think from basically what you're saying and concerns about losing a potentially good bid, maybe we just keep these two and sit on until we all have enough time to think about it and review it all.
I'll make a motion that we table the bids so there's sufficient time for the board to review all the proposals.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carried.
What's a major?
I know.
You were the only one at this table. We were all ready to, we were all ready to do it, brother.
And no matter what votes, we're still running.
Uh-huh, we're still gonna, uh-huh, yeah. Okay, I just have one thing though. It's a, have them change that thing since you guys just told us.
Did you see there's one bid on page three that they're gonna have? The township's gonna pay for all the documents from this one.
I'm sure they are.
Okay, page three of their bill show.
So it's the being building rights, page three, they said would be built directly to the township.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We definitely approve that.
Send it to the building official.
So that's a second hand.
We had our chance for Richard.
I know, right? All right. And then after he says, you know, once they come out, they usually say, "Oh, look at that." You just use the perfect...
So once that motion is not tabled, what is that motion?
It's postponed.
It's postponed.
Because if you table something, you're gonna discuss it before the end of the meeting. She's, it is, she's...
She's learning us.
That is proper according to proper rules.
We're talking about prom and territory.
All right, unfinished business, item 10, wayfinding committee update. Which is our wayfinding committee?
Okay, all right. So I gotta, I put a couple of notes real quick. Okay, I requested turn eight to have an update on our short term with the DPW projects that happened in, up since October. And I know I didn't get anything. I asked Mark if he did. And then I see in the council...
Who did you request it from?
At this meeting, for Dale, yeah. And we haven't seen anything.
You asked for what?
The short term DPW projects. There was a list from the wayfinding. Some of the signs that could have been down, brought down, some repainted, some...
Trimming trees.
Trimming landscaping, that type of thing. Mark didn't see anything. I haven't seen anything. So I didn't know if we're doing that or if this was just kind of... Because the next meeting won't be till next month and I don't know when that is. Yeah, but I'll put a thing out, let you all know in case you want to come to it. And then I saw the village council are putting bids out for park signs and, or that are going out. And I'm confused with that because that was supposed to be part of the wayfinding committee. And I know we're not in any place with the DDA funds to put bids out for anything.
Those were to be temporary signs until the wayfinding comes up with the, what the wayfinding's gonna do. It was just asked for temporary.
What are the temporary going to be then?
I believe what I'm gonna be requesting quotes on would be the name of the park, hours, enter at own risk and rules in accordance with village ordinance.
And where are you putting them?
Don't know.
What do you mean, where are you putting them? Where are you putting the signs?
They were for the one park. The other two, they're not changing the signs currently.
Yeah, this is only for, this was only for the newly designated Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park.
But there has been no action by the council to do that, is there?
They, we made a motion to request quotes.
Bids to go out and I just, it's, you're not gonna spend a lot of money on those that, like then permanent signs.
Well, at the council, there was mixed feelings on that by the council members. Some wanted to see signs go up to be able to post this information immediately. Others felt that it would be better because we haven't had signs for so many years to wait until wayfinding committee had something before we made signs. In the end, the majority of council voted to at least get quotes. We did discuss that, that just getting the quotes doesn't mean we have to follow up and actually get signs. We'll have to decide once we get the quotes.
Okay.
So there was a vote on a motion to get temporary signs?
There was a motion made to request quotes for temporary signs, yeah.
Was that an agenda item add?
No, it was the wildlife preservation park ordinance or sign discussion was old business.
Yeah, there, it was, we had old business on there and that's one of the topics that came up and the motion was made under that topic.
Okay.
I think it says preservation park signage, correct, is what the old business and that's where we talked about it.
You act like you, it's a mystery.
Well, I just, I wanted to make sure because that may have been a meeting I wasn't at. I'm not sure. I don't remember the discussion. And you can't, you can't have an action taken based on just an informal discussion of the board, expenditure of funds going out to seek the bids. It's got to be an action by the board. Otherwise, Tanya or Larry could just say, "Well, I'd like to see, you know, see how many zebras we can get for what we've got left in the, in the, in the, our funds." And, and Andrew, you go do it. And it's like, what if that is not on the agenda? There might be somebody out there that didn't think we should buy zebras in the community. So you can't just do it by doing it that way. But was on the agenda and I'm now satisfied that it was on the agenda, then you can take action based on that. And if that's what they asked for, but we just don't have it yet, is, I guess what the case is.
Correct. I have not even started it.
Right, it was just less funding.
So we have not, haven't had it gone up yet. Okay.
All right, well, hopefully they'll keep the wayfinding in the loop or I don't see why we're having meetings with wayfinding and getting funds from DDA if councils are gonna kind of do their own thing. I think the money should be saved, and it's just my personal opinion, to put it towards the branding and signage and logo that's gonna come out of the wayfinding.
But this is the, anything that happens with wayfinding has to be an action of the village council.
This wasn't an action of way, of our wayfinding group.
I understand, but you said if they're gonna do these other things, they're the only body that has the power to make those decisions.
Okay, then what's our wayfinding group about?
Planning commission has no, no authority.
What is our wayfinding group? The DDA is going to be giving us funds and we're going to look into branding and logos and taglines, so...
That's one of the things that was, came as a recommendation and the council approved.
A wayfinding committee to do that?
To get that.
Correct. Right.
But the, the planning commission and the DDA and everyone else who's getting any portion of this is making recommendations and the wayfinding committee is only going to be making more recommendations to village council for decisions on things. I'm just trying to say that so that it's clear it's not that group that's gonna make a decision.
DDA can choose where their funds go or not.
Absolutely.
If they choose to contribute to the project or not.
Absolutely. This is being led by...
I think with council, this was just a temporary concern that they have on the one sign that they feel would fix that temporary issue, not deciding what the final, you know, product would look like or feel.
Yeah.
I think it was just specifically, let's address this issue on the side.
How long have you lived here, Lee? You're a perfect example. Yeah, how long have you lived here?
Long we lived here.
My whole life.
Yeah, there you go. And I'm just thinking, there's now been assigned his whole life or 25 years for you. I think it could wait till the money goes into the consistency of the wayfinding recommendation.
Well, they meet that up for election.
Okay, good. Something's gotta, something's gotta be, Lee.
Well, you can call, write in or come to a meeting and let us know.
I just let you guys know and it's on that video.
There's other reasons why they want to do that.
I know. Okay, well, that's it. Wayfindings updated.
We appreciate what you guys are doing.
Melanie?
Yeah.
Are you looking for updates on DPW projects specific to signage then?
Um, yeah, we had, did a, Mark came in, I guess he had a meeting with Dale regarding some of the things that we had discussed in the meeting. I don't know, so...
I remember seeing the notes at some point.
And so I was just wondering what did happen because I have not seen anything that happened. And I know DPW now is, you know, we're losing a guy or whatever, but this was from October.
Well, there's nothing that DDA, that the, that the, I'm losing the wrong word.
DPW?
The DPW is looking at right now for signages that we have. Was not aware of that request and at this, at this point... If, any discussion I've had with him about signages in regard to this is that there would be no changes in signs until some decision is made by the board as to what they're gonna do with signs in general.
Right, and this was just...
And part of the discussion that was had before was, you know, do we, do we put a big arrow out on this sign? Do we clear off the trees by this one? Do we take down?
Right, correct.
And I said, "No, we're not going to do any of those things until some decision is made on all of it." Because there are some signs that should, should probably go. I mean, that's my opinion that some of them should be, should, should be taken out.
Correct, and we had a list of those. Okay, so basically he came and talked to you and you said, "No, we're not doing nothing."
Right.
Okay. All right, we're cool. We're done.
Okay. Anything else, Mel? All right. Capital Improvement Plan, I know we got an update yesterday or Monday.
I think the last update is when Larry did formatting.
And I think, did you add in a status column? Because I don't think, I don't know, remember if my format when I have a status column in?
Yeah, that was the last thing we did was the status column. So this, this actually does need to be updated.
And what I would love to see is the date or the version or something along the bottom.
Where's, where'd you get that?
Or header or something.
Maybe we should remove the row logos on the bottom too.
You know, header, footer, just something with the date so we know every time we update it, we know what's, which one we have. Because I think I put four at home and I don't know where I added one.
Actually, speaking of that...
And is there a double page of this, of the street?
I think I noticed that one.
Yeah.
You got two of them?
So we have, like, on the very last page.
I got one that I get from...
It matches the first page kind of sort of.
Yeah, I'll share if you want to look up for the...
One is a comprehensive list of projects and the other one...
I think it's posted, but I don't know.
Okay, because they, but they don't, another, I mean, they don't say anything different.
Well, yeah, there's some more streets on...
Right, there's, one's missing Allen Village Insurance, but what's, I didn't know what the difference between the streets page was and the streets page was.
I don't know.
Okay.
We got a template from Row and then we modified it for our own use. It's just an Excel spreadsheet.
Okay.
It just came with a Row logo on that. We can clean that up off of it. Actually, I have a suggestion regarding this and potentially maybe some other documents similar to this. Is when we have like documents that are going to be actively updated and stuff, it would probably be good if we could separately share them to everybody on the planning commission and the council. Do we have a place for that in documents in the van where we can upload this sheet? So anybody on the council could...
Not where you can upload it. I mean, you can send it to me and I can upload it onto that.
Well, that's where you could upload it.
Yes.
And then we could at least be, make sure we're looking at the latest version of it.
Yes, I can make confidential folders on that.
Now, when you say confidential folders, are you talking about that you would make the CIP a confidential document?
Well, right now, the CIP is some, right now, we have the council packets and other things are only accessible when we log in as council members. The general public will see the agendas and the minutes, the improvements, but there's other information that is additional to that that's accessible if you log in.
Where's that? Where's that? I don't have it here.
And I don't know, I mean...
I see. The village council priority.
I suppose that we can depend on whether, because this document, it's just a draft. At some point, I think it probably would make sense to have your capital improvement plan up there where the public can see it. But I don't know if we're quite ready to publish it.
Pardon? I don't think they care about our priorities.
Well, if we don't feel that it needs to be, just go to for public review, we just won't put it on, on that, on that public document. We'll keep, keep it off.
Well, that's what I said, we can have it on documents in the van on the...
But what I'm saying is to you, I don't think that you can, you can say, "Here's a section of documents that are confidential just to the board and printed in somewhere out on the public view."
It's not gonna be on public view.
Right.
Nobody will see it unless they're...
You have to log in to access it.
Yeah. If you are just general public visiting, you see these folders. When you come in as a council member, you see additional ones that are only accessible if you log, if you have a login IP. Otherwise, you don't get access to those folders from the general side. And we could add this under those folders that are restricted to only login users.
Why would you want to do that?
Because as I said, that way, anybody on the council or planning commission, because we do have logins, we could always make sure that we're looking at the latest copy of this plan rather than have to have Liz keep sending out electronic copies or printed copies that, you know, will get out of date. And I like to be able to make sure I'm looking at the latest version of something when I'm, you know, reviewing it. And this is a document that I think is gonna be an important document for us to be looking at on the council side when we get into the budget planning process before too much longer. So I would like to have it available for anybody on the council or planning commission to be able to see the latest version and what the status is on these projects and see new projects or updates get added into it as they come up.
Larry, I got a question. Where's the, where is the planning commission priority column on this?
We create a public document and say, "Nobody can see it." No, they'll definitely do that.
It's gonna be open to FOIA by that far.
It's not public.
If it's created in, in, that's right. It's created in, at the village by a committee or committees. It is FOIL-able.
Actually, that's, that's the other question regards to...
It would still be FOIL-able on there. It's still FOIL-
In regards to this, that also is a good question because I just heard our chairperson ask about, "Where's the line for planning commission priority?" One of the things that I know is, according to the state law in the Planning and Labeling Act, is that is one of the responsibilities, I believe, the planning commission is capital improvement plan. So that is something I think...
Unless the governing body selects to be the final word, then they can be. And I don't know what this committee's done.
Well, I...
But it doesn't, it doesn't have to be.
As always, the council is going to be the final approving authority for the plan. But in terms of working to put together the plan and helping set priorities, I think that's something the planning commission certainly can be involved in and can help get this document ready for council so that it can be used for them for their planning purposes.
Larry, originally, the capital improvement plan is supposed to start with the planning commission, correct?
According to default way that the Michigan Planning and Labeling Act is set up, yes.
It can be. That's one of the ways it can be. But it can be that the planning commission is the one who sets up the CIP.
The initial...
Initial or any portion of it. There's no, the plant, the, village council can say, "We're the final word. We're gonna make the final decision. We will bring, we will take input from the planning commission or someone else." But, but there's nothing about them having to be the initial.
So then I gotta ask a question, Dale. Do you know in our community whether the council at some point in the past has made a determination that they want to be the ones to make...
Sitting here today, I don't know.
There's nothing paperwork wise. The master plan and the CIP, according to the Planning and Labeling Act, come from plant, or planning commission to, and the recommendations go to council for FOIL.
So I would have to say that in the absence of any documented village action to deviate from the Michigan Planning and Labeling Act, as is their right to do so, in the absence of any... uh, as it's their right to do so, in the absence of any documentation that they have made any such, um, determination, I would say we probably should operate according to what the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act determines is the correct areas of responsibility on this.
Well, we can clarify, and if that's the case, then to make sure to add the status column if that's what's needed.
But we, we probably should clarify that. Uh, would you be able to follow up on that, Dale, to clarify where that responsibility should, should lie and whether there's any fast directions?
It would be really great to make a final word, this village created the planning commission.
Uh, it's in our ordinances, I'm looking for it now.
Yeah, I think that is there somewhere. But I think that also was activated before the latest series in Michigan Planning and Enabling.
I don't think it was updated in 2000.
I'll bring my bag next time.
I know, we didn't.
We'll look at it and report back to you.
So the recommendation would be if that's the case, that you, planning would like to see.
A column.
A column, and we put our priority on, on the items, and it, you guys can do it after that, you can do whatever you want to do. I mean, you have the final say as far as council.
Because our, our priority on there would be that it, uh, met the master plan, or the master plan indicated it. The rest of it really is not our responsibility to know when to replace a snowplow. We just got to ensure that, that's being provided. I, I don't, the CP, CIP, I, I don't get it. I think that's, most of that's responsibility of him and the DPW, and then coming back to the council. I don't know, how in the world can the planning commission make that up? You have no idea what the age and everything of those equipment?
That's why we deferred the DPW.
Well, before, when it was originally originated, Bob Huxwell gave us a list.
Yes.
Of items long term. This, what, tell us what the priorities are for one year, two year, five years down the road, and he'd give us the initial information. Then we took classes in Oakland County on capital improvement plans, how to set them up, how to.
Yeah, and that's.
Prioritize and stuff, and then now you just go, oh, well, don't worry about it.
So what'd you do, what'd you do after that? After you prioritized the equipment? What did you do then with that, once you prioritized it? You turned it over to council.
Correct.
For them to make a decision.
Well, no, no, we also got funding, how much funding to, to formulate all this. We got funding.
Yeah.
How much money do we get a year to spend? Whether it be on roads, equipment, or whatever, that's all established in the budget every year.
And it's not just equipment, it's projects. It's, you know, grant money also goes in there. We've received this much now to do with it.
Part of that was because we had to have a CIP in order to do that master plan, and that's why we had to.
No, no, I was saying, no, this, this is a, that's a critical document. I mean, I did, I did these things for 20 years.
Yeah, but.
But I'll be done if another committee was going to put that together.
Oh, yeah, but this, this is another part of this CIP. It's not just about, okay, this street needs to be redone, that piece of equipment needs to be replaced. If you take a look at our master plan, we have a whole bunch of little projects and things that we live in the back.
No, no, there's specific items in there that definitely fall into things that we would want to prioritize it to be done.
Yeah.
But the capital improvement plan is a combination of those infrastructure needs that have to be done on a regular basis. That's part of it, but also those additional projects, improvement projects that you're looking at, that you, that are pulled from your master plan. So that's why we have all that priorities ties list of, of things we'd like to do at the back of that. And when we have the budgeting, we can take a look at capital improvement plan, we start plugging some of those products in there too, and then we can see where they can fit in the budget. Hey, it looks like we can fit some of these pieces from the master plan into these years in the planning, uh, capital improvement.
So you're gonna do that work for the council, yeah. You're gonna get, you're gonna get that whole CPI and, and everything that the council needs to do to prepare a budget.
That is part of it, yeah, is that it looks like we, we can work on putting together a proposed capital improvement plan. They can, uh, accept that or modify it, and then they can use that to assist them with budget. Just like we put together a master plan, they review it, make modifications, accept, and then at some point approve it. And then they use that to help make some decisions that come before the council.
I understand what you're saying. I agree.
Now, that's, that is my understanding of, when I read through the, um, uh, the Planning and Enabling Act, that is my understanding of what the function of the planning commission is supposed to do, is that they provide guidance for the council to make decisions. We don't make the decisions, but we help get the background material and other information to help council make decisions. Am I close?
You're, you're close.
Okay.
I mean, the planning commission's job is to make recommendations to city, to, to the village council as to what, what they do. It doesn't, it doesn't have any more power than that. And, and there is no penalty if they didn't do it. But they can make the recommendations to, to city, visually council, and they can ignore it if they choose to. And, and go on to something entirely different. But it, and I, and I'm not, I'm not trying in, in what I'm saying to you to make a recommendation to you or to anyone else as to how it should happen. I'm just saying to you what can happen with it.
Now, I'm gonna just switch real quick and temporarily put on my village council hat. And I would say to you that when I get a packet from village council that's 120 pages long, if you think that trying to review this packet before this meeting is tough, imagine 120 pages, you know, 100 to 120 page packet, you have to go through everything in there prior to your meeting, okay? It's a lot of work. We, it's very difficult to digest that much information and be able to do all that. And if we also had to, on top of that, try to work in digesting and building all these other things, this is where, from my perspective, anything that the planning commission can do to help guide us and help get this information prepared for us is just helps me on council to be able to focus more on all the rest of that other stuff that I also have to deal with as a council member. So that's a way of kind of offloading some of this prep work uh, for capital improvement and budgeting, things like that. That's just my perspective as a council member, so, planning commission.
I think you should change shirts when you.
All right, now, what hat you got on now, Larry?
Planning commission.
Thank, no, please. I appreciate you explaining that. All right, uh.
I'll take that back, please.
I gotta, I gotta.
I wanted to just keep reminding myself on this.
Okay, one thing about the CIP is it has proposals for sidewalks for Oakwood Road, which has been on for, well, before we had CIP. There's still no proposal for sidewalk along Granger Road, you can point that out, because it's just as necessary as one on Oakwood Road.
Well, keep in mind, the Oakwood one, we've received a grant, and therefore it has to be on there, should be on there, and will be on there. But keep plugging Granger. It's not that we don't love you. It's that if you give us a grant, we would love to have one on there.
Well, we're supposed to come up with a grant.
Have it that way.
Well, see, that's one of those areas where, you know, the planning commission can help, because we can say, hey, we see these are additional items that.
It could be in there.
Oh, yeah, there's lots of streets and stuff.
It's like, back, back bench, it's on the back burner, but at least there's.
This is very incomplete.
It's a draft.
Mark on?
Draft one.
It needs a lot of work, but at least it's a starting.
I've been going for that since 2000, so, that's just, just to give you an idea of how disappointing it is every time I see one of these. And it doesn't have anything about Granger Road, sidewalk or pathway or something to keep kids on bikes and adults off the street, off the road.
And I think I've been on your side for just about as long on those same topics, yes.
I have the same issue with Oakwood Road.
Yes.
Right.
Okay, so, I know about it too, and they go, oh, well, we don't have money for that, well.
Right. This will help to be able to figure where to fit that money in what year and under what budget, so this is where this will be.
I say we put it on the township side of both of those roads, and we don't have to worry about it.
First of all, you know, the big, the big.
I've been trying, it's not working. What was that?
Okay.
Oh.
I've got the floor. First of all, on Oak, I was talking about Oakwood Road, okay? Everybody makes a silly ass comment about the fact that you'd have to build a bridge by the pond. There's no reason why, you can start at the pond, go to Sherman Court, you go down Sherman Court, and you cross the path on Easteridge Drive where you live, and people can get into the village, get anywheres, and you don't have to put up a million dollar walking bridge on Oakwood Road over a pond. And that's why we're here to explain to people options and things, okay? Because I get, I get upset. I've lived in this community my whole life. When I was a kid, I had to walk down that road with trucks and cars when I was five, six years old, and they still haven't done nothing with it. Thank you. So every aspect, and if you're on the village council, if you're representing the people of the community, you'll listen to people that live on Granger Road, Oakwood Road, because they have big issues too, okay? They aren't in the middle of the town like you are. But you got people that you represent that live on Oakwood Road, that live on Granger Road. And you need to start thinking about items like that.
Well, I have a kindergartner that's supposed to walk a mile and a half to school with no sidewalks, so I know exactly how you feel, from my house. Mile and a half for a five-year-old, no sidewalks, not safe.
And just to give some.
That's how it goes. We're almost in both.
Some more historical perspective, when I was on the council way back in the early 90s, 92 through 96, I do remember way back then, we were talking about a need for sidewalks on Granger Road, because it wasn't safe for kids trying to walk to schools.
Right.
And that was something that was mentioned even way back as early as then. So, I mean, it's, it's not that this, these topics aren't aware, it just, I don't know, it, it just seems that in the actual execution of trying to get from saying, we need something to actually doing it, is where we, we fail as a community. We need to get better at that. Uh, our council needs to get better at that, and I agree with that, and, you know, we'll do what we can on it, but it's, it's, it's challenging.
Right, but it, it just points out, you got a capital improvement plan. You go, well, there ain't no way we can afford to do that or do that. Put it on the list, doesn't mean you have to do these items. These are important items in the community.
I agree, and once we have them on the list, then we start saying, how much money do we have this year? And this is where the list helps, because once we have a list, we say, hey, this is all the stuff that we want to do. What's the highest priority to the lowest? This year, we have X amount of dollars. Start at the top of the list, work your way down. When you get to the end of your money, that's where you stop for that year. The next year, you start, the next one's down, and you just keep doing that. That way, that way you start picking away and, and.
Right, and, for example, Dale may have the scenario that all of a sudden, there's grant money to do stuff like, that costs a lot of money, that would be on Oakwood Road and, you know, on Granger Road.
Yeah, and if one of these projects gets that money.
On the list that people are aware of it, and all of a sudden something comes up, maybe they have a group grant between the village and the township that funding is available to do some of these items.
And if one of the big street projects gets grant money somehow, where they cover half the cost, well, suddenly that frees up more money that we could use to move forward some of the other projects, for example, like sidewalks. So that's where having this in place and knowing what funding and what years we have projected will really help us.
I agree. That's the only point I'm trying to make, is those, those items need to be on there. As far as I'm concerned, and the people I've written, representing here in the village, I mean.
Well, it's important also, if, if we're looking, and, and it doesn't come up a lot, it doesn't come up as often. I, I don't know if there's anything similar to that, but in northern Michigan, there is a firm that sits, searches out grants for communities, uh, in different communities up in, in that area. I'll pay a fee every year into this private group that goes out and, and finds grant, and, and for Sheboygan, where I was as city manager before, we use them, and we got, within a, we, while I was there, we had two or three grants going that we received because of help from that group, so if ever we get the opportunity for that, or I hear of something like that, I'm definitely gonna make that recommendation to this council, that we look into paying to get somebody to do it, because it doesn't always come available to us, and sometimes it's, it's a, something that might come out either in a clerk's, uh, booklet, or something that she receives, could be something I receive as a manager, could be something that planners only receive, and it's a back corner, you know, two paragraph, something that you wouldn't know about. So, um, it is helpful to know that you have something like that, because if, if additional, and you would think with, with all the talk from the governor and from everything that's been discussed recently, seems like every time you turn around and they talk about something, they talk about roads again. The thing that they don't bother to tell anybody, that at least my experience to, to date, is that all of those expenditures are for state roads.
Correct.
And none of it's for local stuff.
Yeah, nothing for local.
So, so they say, oh, we're gonna, we want to spend $10 million this year, and I look at something like that, I say, fantastic. And, and typically, I would go to my, my, either my engineers or to planning consultant, and I'd say, what is it, and how do we apply? Well, you can apply, but you're not eligible, because you're not a safe.
No, we would be only eligible for M-15.
Yeah, yeah, and, and so, I mean, when, when I was supervisor in, in Independence Township, we fought for years to get any kind of federal money for paving gravel roads, because the road commission never would do anything with paving gravel roads, and so every year I would ask them, what are you doing with the gravel roads? And they would say, well, we don't, we don't do anything. It's like, it's yours, it's not mine. As a township, I don't own my, the gravel roads, you own them. And you're the one that spends the money for it, but, and you should have a plan for it. Point is, it never happened. We fought and fought and fought with the feds, and finally got them out of, and I can't remember how many miles now it was, but it seems to me, may have been like 500 miles of gravel roads across the tri-county area. And they had no funding for federal either, so they finally virtuously came up and said they would, they would agree to accept, uh, proposals for, um, $1 million a year for paving gravel roads. Now, that means that if, when we were all dead and gone and nobody even knows that we were existed, they would have one road done. But at least it was something, it was a start, and that's kind of where we are with these, but at least if we have them, we can say, we've got out of a list of, of our consumer, our, our plans, we've got five different listings, some specific things we want to do, and we know what they are.
Yeah, yeah.
So it may help, I mean, it's, it's not something I would, you know, bet your last dollar on, but.
No.
But at least it, it is something.
Yes, right.
So it occurs to me that the two roads you're talking about are Oakwood and Granger border the township. Can we work with the township to come up with something, even if we have to go across the road sometimes? You know, some parts, it's on one side, on township side sometime, some other parts are on the village side, we might have to have little crosswalks.
Well, we would have to, we would have to get, uh, it, it, it's not uncommon for there to be a mutual understanding of that and a mutual agreement. What can't happen is Ortonville can't pave roads in Brandon Township.
Well, correct.
Period. I mean, no matter how much it makes sense or how, how much it may be needed.
Well, I'm not talking about paving sidewalks.
You're talking sidewalks.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah.
We can't put sidewalks in on the Brandon Township side of the road.
Right, but they can enjoy it.
Yes, they can, and we can certainly, we could, if we were doing it on our side, we could make arguments to them to do it. And certainly, you know.
It seems like that's something we should work with them on, see if we can come up with something, some compromise to get.
It'd be a great idea to do that.
Good.
The problem is, we have got so many roads and so many sidewalks and so many everything else with regard to this kind of thing that we have to do, that it's, when you look at it, it's, it's a, it's a difficult priority to set, but it's something, something needs to be done.
Yeah, but you have to first get in the list, then you can start thinking about priorities. We don't even have the list completed, so.
You mean for the CIP?
Yeah, I think we got a good start, we got a lot of.
I think this is an excellent start. I think, I mean, I had nothing to do with it, so I'm not trying to praise me or what I had anything to do with, but I think it's excellent. And for the reasons I said, I think that we've already got a document that we can point to somebody and say, we've been wanting to do this for a long time.
Okay. All right, anything else on capital improvement? We'll move on to discussion items. Anybody have any discussion items? All right, go ahead, I'm.
Okay, the first thing, I think the only thing I have, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation with the Main Street Oakland County, with the DDA, has requested that Ortonville look into becoming a redevelopment ready community. The village council approved that at the meeting. What that entails is anybody besides Matt to be trained as well. Matt is. Dale said he would like to do that as well. And then that leaves a planning commissioner that would be interested in being part of the process to be training, to be part of the redevelopment ready community.
I think they get certified as well.
And, yes, the training certification. And, let me just give you the quick highlight. It is if your community plans for future investment, invites public input, and offers superior customer service, then the redevelopment ready certification is for you, our community. What in a nutshell it does, and I don't want to speak out of turn because obviously this is not a sentence, it gives communities in Michigan the ability to say, this is what we can provide, this bucket list for your business, come join us. So for our empty businesses, it would say, this and this and this and this is what is available in this space. And businesses have a chance to go on the site and come in from that aspect and say, hey, you have this or this and I'm looking for that, or kind of plug in and do searches. It also allows us to support our current businesses that are there as well. So it's kind of a perfect combination of DDA, Planning Commission, and Village Council and by having multiple people trained, you know, giving the input and taking it back to the groups. What I'm asking you to do is to look over, go out and I'll give it to you, the link, go on the website, check it out, see if you're interested in it, and see who would like to do that because we would love to have somebody on board.
And what is the website?
It's redevelopment ready community. It's on myplace, it's myplace.gov. All the bottom of my pages are.
Will you send out to Michigan?
I will, I'll send you out the link.
Okay.
And there's so many different things, you know, which ends you're coming from, you know, whether you're coming in from DDA Main Street, like I said, the state of Michigan, all the different processes. We are going to do professional developments, our group professional developments, we will be doing, highlighting some of these as a group for, you know, monthly professional developments.
Okay.
So, but they're not.
The ones that you have on your.
Correct.
Okay.
So, so that's where that's at. So check it out and see who you think would love to raise their hand next month and say me.
Thanks, Sonny. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Mel, you were next.
I was, is anyone going to this training? The Oakland County Department of Economic Development, the stuff, is anyone going to that? That you got in your.
I didn't check my calendar.
But then, I'm gonna look at that because then, if I'm interested in something like that, I want to do this too, or I couldn't do it. But is anyone going to this? Or did they look at it and?
Yeah, so here.
He got it.
You mean email.
Well, I got an email and then the packet. Okay, well, I don't know. Did, were you? No. No.
Or Carter do some.
Lee, are you doing, were you interested in this? No?
All right. I have to check, like I said, I have to check my calendar. I looked at it, but I didn't get that far.
All right.
But yes, it is interesting. Are you interested?
Yeah, but I'm gonna look at that other thing now.
Okay.
But that other thing looks like too much than I might be interested in these, for sure. I thought that looked pretty good for Oakland County. And it was the ZB, you know, it was the zoning too and the planning and the, so, I don't know, it looked good.
Good light spot.
I better just look at that stuff to me.
Okay.
And then the last thing is for the census, I know it's on our website, do we send out anything to our village people or put it in the paper? I mean, they say to make a big push for it and planners, planning committees are supposed to really support this and push it because it's so important for funding. And like, I didn't know how much, like, it's 18,000 lost per person until the next census. If we don't get them in, that's how much funding we could lose per person. So, do we do a push for this? Do you, other than on the website, let the community know?
I think that's primarily what we do. We have.
Just on the website?
Facebook.
Because like, what about people that don't have access to social media?
Well, it's going to be mailed to everybody's house.
Yeah, what about people that don't have access to?
It's gonna be mailed to your house. Every address will receive the information.
Okay.
But that's not from village level, that's from the state level.
That's county, oh, that's state, okay.
So the only thing we've done thus far is verify our boundaries. It's not even to the point where we've received anything.
Yeah, I think that's a mantra.
Yeah, so we're, you know, first those.
Okay, so we don't do, we don't have to do, or we have nothing planned to do to get it out there?
Might as well.
Because I thought maybe even something in the citizen, for those that don't get any kind of email.
Part of the problem with all of that is that the timing of when somebody's gonna be at your house to do something with it for the people who send in their own information once they've gotten it, they have to know what all that is, and the only time it really means anything to us is when you're down to that last group of people who haven't sent anything else in. They will, the census group will try to have somebody go visit one of those and get individual, but even those won't happen. And for the most part, at least what I've seen in other communities, is if you get down to that point of those people who are doing it, it may be, it may be an excellent reason in their mind for what, they're not gonna do it, but it doesn't matter if you walked in with a cake in your hand and said, please fill out your census form, then you can have this cake. Otherwise, I'm taking it back to the car. They still wouldn't fill it out. And some have legitimate reasons. I mean, I shouldn't judge them whether they have legitimate reasons or not. They may all be legitimate, but some of them don't sound legitimate. Like, you know, if I fill this out, the FBI is gonna be at my front door the next day, they take me away. It's like, that doesn't happen here, you know, we don't, we're not living in Russia or somewhere, you've got to worry about that. But there are people who believe, I mean, I have as much skepticism of government in many things as, when I was practicing law, there was a provision where people could put their will with the probate court, file it there. And then if, you know, when you passed away, somebody could go and get a copy of it, use it to file for your probate. I never recommended that to clients to do because in my mind, I'm thinking, some bright tax collector is gonna say, let's go look, check out, find out who are the top 20 taxpayers in the county and find out if they file in the state or not. And if they didn't, we should file one for them. It's not their business to know what your will is. And so I don't want to give government another way to deal with it.
Right.
But yeah, but I mean, funding is though based on that for communities, so.
No, I'm just saying to you that there are reasons why people don't do that sometimes.
Correct.
And I'm not sure that for those few that have those kind of very esoteric reasons for not wanting to be involved, they're not gonna be involved. But it is, it is important that everybody knows and we have to make sure that when we're talking and all of you, as you're talking to people, and somebody makes that argument, Tim's, say, fine, if you don't want to do it, don't do it, but just understand that we've got all kinds of things to do within the village that we should be doing. We're limited on money. You don't send yours in and we could lose 20, $50,000 in potential funding on a federal level because you didn't send your forms in.
Correct. Yeah, that was just kind of my point.
So understand what effect you have on this.
Yeah, I do remember, what was it, the last census? Detroit came in just under a million or something, so they really pushed hard to get that number over because that was a breaking point for a lot of federal funding.
Right.
It's because we use base 10 numbering system.
Yes.
It's the only reason that was a breaking point.
Well, they're lucky too.
Anybody else got anything? Yeah, Rick.
So, last month, we were supposed to have a meeting with, our master plan was supposed to be reviewed and discussed by the county planning commission. And that got canceled because they didn't have enough planning commissioners to be there. Now, did anything happen with that? Is it rescheduled yet? Are we gonna just kind of?
I think it's rescheduled towards end of February, but that's already passed a 63-day review process, which will end today.
So, if that's the case, if anything gets brought up in that review, any effect?
The only thing we have to be concerned with is what we receive.
Yeah.
If, this is a period of time with, under which the county and the surrounding communities and surrounding jurisdictions like this will have the right to say something.
Right.
Doesn't say they have to, and we don't have to wait. They don't get it in, they didn't get it in.
Time's up. Cancel the meeting. We're out of left for anything.
The most, the most important part of this entire.
Well, no, they sent their, they sent recommendations.
They already did.
Yeah, Rick.
The one that you received that you got, and then this was the updated, so you received two different, so that in the front line.
There's a new one, Rick, that you got tonight.
Yep. The most important part of that is on page nine where they say, our staff reviewed the proposed plan, blah, 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 found the village of Ortonville draft master plan update to be not inconsistent. So.
Not inconsistent with what?
With any surrounding communities' master plans or the overall general community. Oakland County group. So they're saying, hey, we didn't find any reason to have concerns. We have suggestions on how to make it look better, but they didn't have any concerns with the basic content in the plan.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn if we don't have anything else.
Well, I was just gonna say, do you, does everybody on here, I believe all of us are members, the village signs up as members of Michigan Planning Association, correct? And is everybody here getting those communications from the Michigan Planning Association? Because they also have a lot of good training opportunities and such.
Yes.
Okay, good, because I know that that's another good.
Are you getting that?
Well, I just signed up for whatever that was last, and then this, you sent me this one, was it you? And I signed up, so I should be getting those. And then whatever else I get here, so I think.
That Michigan planning one, that has the whole month of.
Michigan, yeah. And I know.
And that's the one, yeah, send me that and then I can.
We went to a, we went to a training in Owassa that was put on by Michigan Planning Association. That was a really good one.
CIP training.
It was, yeah. So they do have a lot of good trainings that they offer in the area, so that's another source of good opportunities for training. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I get stuff from SNCOG and Michigan Planning Association and everything, and they all have really interesting topics, so.
All right, is that it?
I think so. And I, DPW is doing a great job on that.
So is Liz Edwards in the office.
Good job, Liz.
You did excellent.
I had to toot my own horn.
What did you say?
I tooted all the time.
I said, and so is Liz Edwards in the office.
Yeah, you are. You keep this place afloat. You do, Liz.
We even have a street fund that.
Not quite.
It's actually Edward.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, second.
All right. Mel, I need.
Mel, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, thank you.
We have to.
Thank you.